Six point four cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. The current rate is at six point three cents for one hundred dollars of evaluation. That would mean on a one hundred thousand dollar home, an increase in the property tax bill of one dollar. For a two hundred thousand dollar home, that would mean an increase to the property tax bill of two dollars. When the state helps Tracy, his clerk, do a property tax calculation, the compensating rate, the rate that would raise the same amount of money as we took in last year from property tax revenue, would be six point two cents per hundred. Council is allowed by state law to increase the real dollars, the real dollar revenue, of property tax revenue, by four percent over the previous year. And this rate of six point four cents per hundred dollars of evaluation will allow us to do that. So that is the proposed rate. Council will be discussing this rate and having first reading of an ordinance later in the meeting, but now I will open the public hearing for any comment that the public may have about the proposed rate. Given that there seems to be no public comment about the proposed tax levy, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting, having checked that box of the requirement for a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. So with that bit of business, thank you, Adam. We discussed that just a little while ago.
We forget so quickly.
So now if I could, go ahead and call the council meeting to order, and then we'll ask Mr. Stone to lead us in, after a moment of silence, ask Mr. Stone to lead us in the place to play.
Pledge and reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Present.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Tackett?
Here.
And we have a full house. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got a comment to make.
Yes, sir.
At the last council meeting, I made some inappropriate comments, and I should have chosen my words a whole lot different than what I did, and I want to leave it at that and move on.
Thank you. Thank you. Would like to mention, Mr. Thompson, I've talked about this several times over the last two weeks, and I think it's important to note that Marvin came to me within a day or so of the prior council meeting and indicated that he wished to have this time before the council. So that was his immediate goal, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Each of you should also have a copy of the latest check register that went out with your latest packet, if you can indicate if you received that. Thank you. And now for public comments, the first person to have signed up is Ms. Amelia Cloud.
Good evening. I'm here to represent Georgetown Fairness and invite you to our celebration. We've had three picnics, and this year we can have a celebration because you all voted last, two weeks ago, to accept a fairness ordinance in this community. So we will be having a celebration on October the 19th down at Royal Spring Park because it's, we had to find a date that didn't interfere with the college fall break, the high school, the school system fall break, and other things, but we didn't do our due diligence with the Democratic Women's Group that's meeting over at the college. So we have to do it between two and four in the afternoon on October the 19th, and I have invitations for all of you. We would love to have you come and join us. It's always a family-friendly event. We will have pizza donated by Fat Cats and other food, and cake hopefully made by a local baker, and it should be a nice afternoon event where we can just enjoy each other's company.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, and thank you so much for passing the ordinance last week. I've been talking to a lot of people, and they're very pleased with that. It's made them very happy for their own relatives or for themselves because it has affected them directly.
Thank you.
We need to approve that because she wants to close Water Street.
That's right here on, I make a motion, Mayor, for the closing of Royal Spring.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, too. I was supposed to do that.
They're taking care of you.
Tracy, thank you so much.
Is there a second motion to close Water Street?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, we thought since it's family-friendly and it's an event where it might be bringing kids to be on the street, there'd be wise to do that. And Tracy, I'll get to the library and call my son and information, but thank you very much.
And our Public Works Department and Police Department have learned where they can block the street and still let the side street traffic flow.
Right, if they can do it at Opera Alley, just inside of Opera Alley and College Street, that would be perfect, because that only blocks that one little area, and they can get plenty of parking there.
Yes, ma'am. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also under public comment, Mr. Todd Stone.
The, it's called SHAC, it's the Student Health Advisory Club at Georgetown College, is wanting to have a 5K on October 24th at 5:30 in the afternoon. This is one that they have done in the past, and they're trying to get it more and get more of the students instead of sitting in their rooms, getting them more active around campus. So just one that they're trying to raise a little money and to promote wellness at the college.
Is that a motion you made?
Sure.
Second.
And seconded by misnames. If there are no questions for Todd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That is all that have signed up for public comment. If I could move into Mayor's comments, and they'll be pretty brief. So they will be pretty brief. We, I thought we may get some public comment, and I was prepared to address this as part of public comment, but Chase, I just figured early in the meeting, I'd go ahead and address something that I would normally, if you could come to the podium, something that I would typically address during Mayor's comments, and that has been the complaints that most of you have either heard or read about the taste and odor of the water that's coming through the taps right now. We've done news interviews about this, we've talked to the news graphic about this. This purely is an issue of the source of the water that we're using right now. The spring has been intermittent. We can only use it sometimes, and then it draws down to a level where we have to stop using it and let it recharge. So far, Chase, I think you've had to do that four cycles.
We're doing that now daily.
You do that now, you're in your fifth cycle.
Since we talked Friday, we're pretty much treating, we're drawing water two hours on, two hours off. Maximum treatment we can do is about 14 hours a day. We're purchasing over 50% of our water from the water right now.
Is the Frankfort doing the same thing, though? Aren't they having the same problem?
They're having the same problem, but they can draw directly from the river.
Okay.
The, because we've been purchasing, well, the spring itself is stagnant because it's so low, and we're using it intermittently. The Kentucky River, due to the high temperatures and the extended drought, the pool that Frankfort and Kentucky American draw from is not flowing, so it's become stagnant. It's just science. It's being treated to the point where the water is safe to drink, wash food, cook food, and bathe in, but it does, for some, have, some more than others, have a detectable odor and taste. The water is safe to drink. This is affecting anyone who is drawing from the Kentucky River right now, and that would include Versailles, Frankfort, Lexington, and at least 50% of the time Georgetown. So we're not immune to those water supply problems either. The couple of things that have coincided all at one time that have brought the public's attention to this issue even more than they normally would have is the fact that our recently enacted rate increase went into effect on August the 1st, and the timing of that coming during a summer month when we're in the middle of a drought and water usage is higher than it normally is, either to wash a car or fill a pot of flowers out on the porch. Not very often, but we saw, we've seen from our consumers and our customers, higher volumes of water used because it's a summer month and a drought period, and that coincided with the rate increase. So that financial effect coupled with the odor and taste of the water, we've gotten many criticisms, I'm sure you all have gotten many questions, but we thought we needed to address it right at the first of the council meeting, and Chase, whatever you need to add or enlighten us with.
Well put. We're just doing our very best to ensure that we're putting out a good product, and I'll just reiterate, the water is safe for consumption, it is safe for whatever you want to use it for. We're doing the best we can with additional treatment that involves additional chemicals, but when that source water is as stagnant as it is, and it has as many nutrient growth, as much nutrient growth as it does, there's just only so much we can do, unfortunately. So we apologize to our customers for the displeasure of the taste and odor right now, and we're just very much hopeful for a long sustained rain event to recharge the river basin and as well as our spring recharge area, and that's really the only thing that we're going to be able to do at this point to correct the taste and odor. As far as the usage, the usage complaints, we've had a number of, and historically this time of year, the second half of summer going into fall, when we've had that drought period, usage historically goes up. If your constituents have an issue, please tell them to come in, see us at the office or call, we'll walk them through the high-usage policy that we have, board-approved policy. It's not meant to be easy to walk through, it's meant to be fair to everybody, every customer, and we will get them through that. If there's an adjustment that needs to be made for the policy, we will do so.
We did want Chase to remind the council that there is a process in place where disputed usage can be checked out. It is a rigorous process because we have to determine where the water went, and I think it's also important for the council to understand that we are not estimating usage anymore. We read every meter every month, and that's done by radio, so this is not simply an estimation error, these are actually usage amounts. And the process would involve, if someone has an exceptionally high usage number, it involves a plumber coming to your house and actually going through certain steps to determine where a leak might be, and then actually finding and repairing those leaks, but they do have a process, the board has a process in place to make refunds where that's necessary.
The customer will be responsible for having a plumber inspect their home. If they find and are able to document a correction that they've made, then we can issue an adjustment. We check the meter, and we check what's on our side of the meter, that part of the service to the main for a leak. We also can send the meter off, and we test it ourselves, then we send it to an independent third party. We don't send it to the manufacturer, we send it to another third party, and we can do that at any time there is a dispute.
There are a lot of citizens, they got a pool, they don't realize when that pool drops below that scammer, and you put two or three inches of water, you're to use 1,500, 2,000 gallon of water for that pool back up. So that happens, too, and it don't take long to run a bill up anyway.
A toilet leak doesn't take long to run it up either.
Don't take long for something, or have you wiped it like that, and just water flowers all day long. It adds up quick, you know.
But these are, there's a lot of questions about this, and we thought it appropriate to make sure we gave you all the best advice that we had. Any questions for Chase?
Thank you, Mayor.
And believe it or not, that's the only Mayor's comments I have. Could set a record. Item seven on your agenda under City Attorney is first reading of that 2019 property tax ordinance. Tracy, if you could go ahead and read the summary and...
An ordinance providing for and making the real property, personal property, motor vehicle, and watercraft tax levy for city purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020 inclusive. Whereas the City Council for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky is required by KRS 92.280 to enact by ordinance each year a tax levy on all real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and watercraft. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the following tax levy is hereby made for city purposes for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020 inclusive with. For the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020 inclusive, there is hereby made a tax levy of six point four cents on each $100 of assessed real property, six point four cents on each $100 of assessed personal property, and 16.8 cents on each $100 of assessed motor vehicle and watercraft, which tax proceeds shall be designated to the general fund for the general operation of city government. Section two, all matters relating to the payment of the taxes imposed on motor vehicles and watercraft hereunder shall be in accordance with KRS Chapter 134.800. Section three, that upon all taxes for real property and personal property levied herewith which are unpaid on January 1, 2020, there shall begin to accrue a tax and be added from said date a flat penalty of 15% onto the total amount of said taxes, then due and payable through January 31, 2020, after which the flat penalty shall be 20%. Additionally, tax bills not paid for March 1, 2020 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to said unpaid taxes and collected by the City Finance Director and/or the City Clerk. Should the real or personal property tax herein become delinquent, the City Financial Officer, the City Clerk, and/or the City Attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of delinquency. Section four, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section five, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section six, the ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law, publicly introduced and revved for the first time September 23, 2019.
That constitute first reading of the ordinance. We, as is usually the case, we'll have roll call vote at the next meeting, but would be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have this evening.
So we're increasing the rate this year?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much in additional revenue is that going to increase?
It will increase the overall property tax revenue by around $21,000 or $22,000.
Reason for increase?
We need revenue.
Okay, going simple.
Short and simple. We need revenue. And if there are no other questions?
No, Mayor, I mean, I, I mean, you know, I'd say, but we do. We're probably going to need more revenue than this can generate.
We've, I've been mentioning to the council for some time that Andrew and I have been, and Stacy have been working on a report to the council about what our revenues look like and what our expenditures look like in comparison to the other 18 larger cities in Kentucky. We excluded Lexington and Louisville, but we've looked at the peer group being the 18 largest cities in Kentucky, including Georgetown, and the property tax rate is without a doubt where the, do you have it available, Andrew?
Just brought those two slides.
This...
It's a thing.
We, I asked Andrew to go ahead and pull out the one slide from that presentation that has to do with property tax revenue, just to give you a graphic look at how our property tax rates compare to our other cities of similar size.
We're orange.
The average for the 18 cities is the green bar on the far left. Georgetown's property tax rate is in the orange, and those are the property tax rates for the other 18 larger cities in Kentucky. It makes no sense to further reduce that rate.
We've all twisted our neck and...
We're done. Thank you, Andrew.
We're done, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
That happens, that happens very often.
That's okay, we can, we can see this one. We'll go into these charts in greater detail at a later date, but we thought it appropriate tonight just to show you the reality of our property tax rate.
Say again, Mayor, I kind of missed your thing, I was reading this, what was, which was which?
The green is the average for the 18 cities we've evaluated, the orange is the city of Georgetown, the blue are the other cities that we've compared ourselves to.
This, this didn't work. Go to the next slide. It's not working. The next slide is, is the overall tax rate, so including, it's like library districts and the county and the school districts, that is in those cities, all the taxes that the citizens of those cities pay, not just to the city. The average there is 1.15, $1.15 per hundred, we're at 81.
Of course, the, you're used to, with your homes, the county property tax bill is so much higher than the city's property tax bill because of all those other taxing districts that are in there, that even when we look at the total property tax burden for a Scott Countyan, that's what this picture looks like. And this is just kind of a sneak preview of the type of data that we're trying to pull together to understand why we struggle with some budget issues, why with department heads we work so hard to be able to hire more policemen and firemen. We have to understand our revenue and expenditure picture, and we want to make sure that we make this available, this information available to the council, but we thought it'd be helpful to see it at first reading of this ordinance tonight. Thank you. That, I think we got the point across, Andrew. If you have any questions about that rate, we, Tracy's calculated it every which way it can be calculated, and Stacy can help explain it, so just talk to any of us, and we'll be ready to vote on that at the next meeting.
Could you send us, by any chance, Andrew's charts?
Yes, be glad to.
We could help.
Be glad to. And that, again, that'll be a good preview of some of the data that we're trying to pull together in a broader sense. Item eight on the agenda under Finance is second reading of the Budget Amendment Ordinance. Sponsors, Mr. Lesby and Ms. Tackett. Andrew, would you be sure and send your two slides concerning property tax rates to the council?
Absolutely.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Summary general fund, prior year revenues are increased by $805,336.41. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $181,822.84. Building inspection expenses are increased by $1,490. Police expenses are increased by $31,028.71. Fire expenses are increased by $47,141. Dispatch expenses are increased by $347,155.67. Public works expenses are increased by $131,369. City engineer expenses are increased by $21,200. Inter-local expenses are increased by $15,000. Transfers out are increased by $327,774.86. Capital expenses are increased by $65,000. Business park fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $1,082,341.50. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $250,000. Business park expenses are decreased by $832,341.50. Math funds, prior year revenues are increased by $570,972.43. Expenses are increased by $570,972.43. LGEA fund, prior year revenues are increased by $76,057.96. Expenses are increased by $76,057.96. Drug fund, prior year revenues are increased by $1,489.10. State expenses are increased by $1,249.90. Federal expenses are increased by $240.10. Grant fund, prior year revenues are increased by $8,747.99. Federal grant revenues are decreased by $9,277.19. State grant revenues are decreased by $238,244. Other revenues are increased by $182. Police department expenses are increased by $48,755.50. Capital expenses are decreased by $287,326.70. Intergovernmental service fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by $475. Transfers in are increased by $327,402.36. Sanitation expenses are increased by $7,450. Recycling expenses are increased by $950. Stormwater expenses are increased by $327,402.36. Cemetery operating fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by $372.50. Transfers in are increased by $372.50. Cemetery operating expenses are increased by $745. Capital projects fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $1,201,41.17. Intergovernmental revenues are decreased by $1,323,195.50. Capital expenses are decreased by $2,524,236.67. All ordinances, parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Cor Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www.dorshingtonky.gov. Holdly introduced and revved for the first time September 9, 2019. Hold their vote a second time September 23, 2019.
Thank you. This has been made.
Second.
And seconded.
Who's that second? Todd?
And on this one, when we assign who has to come to the council meeting and who gets the night off, we made Tracy, Stacy sit through the long meeting last week on first reading to see if there are any questions. Gave her the night off tonight, so we'll do our best to answer any questions if there are any tonight. This is intended to be primarily a cleanup ordinance for all the officers. And if there are no questions, we will call the roll.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
It carries, thank you. Item nine on your agenda is a municipal order approving the purchase of a forensic package. This particular forensic package helps us with accident reconstruction, 3D imaging, scanning, to keep our equipment up to par. We bid this, we did only receive one bid, it's in the amount of $59,995, and fortunately... one bid. It's in the amount of $59,995. And fortunately, this does not come out of your general fund. It comes out of the police department's drug forfeiture fund.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And seconded. If there are no questions about that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 10 on your dispatch is a municipal order approving AMK change orders for our radio project. We're continuing to slog through that project, and this, Andrew, as I understand, takes certain equipment off of one of the towers.
There's a whole bunch of changes.
There's a whole bunch of changes. Okay.
This is the newest one. That... I gave you all a copy of that name. They all have the newest.
I've got it pulled up here.
The one that... The first one that needs explanation is change order eight. So you can see we did one through seven and then nine. So that was... That was omitted in a previous MO, so we're cleaning that up. So that's why there's a difference in the numbering there, but...
All of these are... All of these are either related to some weather delay that we've had, some change that we've made.
Andrew, could you come up? I'm not sure you have a microphone there.
All of these are due to some... Either they're delayed because of weather and change we've ever made because of that. Remember, we made a major shift in the project and purchased the Rocktown Road property, made some changes there. There have been some... The one that we've added at the end today, it wasn't your copy when it went out of the packet, as the mayor started mentioning, the Sadieville Tower has more equipment on it than it can handle. And because the county has a... County has a contract with a broadband provider to put equipment on there, so for to have both their equipment and our equipment, it's necessary to take off a bunch of stuff that isn't being used but otherwise affects the wind load rating. So that is a change order that we did not anticipate. And I think the rest of it is mostly like what's related to weather and time delays.
And Andrew, as I recall, it still leaves us a contingency fund. We're getting closer, but we're not out with a contingency fund.
Again, a lot of these are due to that. Now, constructing a $500,000 tower has added a lot of things that we weren't anticipating. The good news is we will make that money back over time and savings from not having to lease site from another company.
And I assume we still have the potential for some receipt of cash when we sell the balance of the farm that we don't need for any...
We'll have that, plus we'll have any principal income from that tower, which could be some good. We budgeted very modestly on tower income, but I think we have... On a tower that tall, we have room for lots.
Okay.
Are you in motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the municipal order. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So there may be balance on the... On the... What we have in the contingency is how much?
$41,000.
66, wasn't it?
So they know after that it's done, that there won't be any more?
There are no... Any more will be offering on our money. We'll be pretty...
Have you kind of made it to them that the debt, when the contract is up, the contract is up, the money's gone, the money's gone?
This is one expensive contract.
Yeah.
It's staggering.
Yeah, when every type of communications, it always seems to be so.
Yeah.
Mayor, is this all of the cities, or does the county share any of this?
County shares half of this.
Half of what we just... Okay, what I thought.
Yeah, we're doing this all on...
We administer the contract though, so we bill them for half of the tower.
Okay.
But we will bill them for half of these change orders as well. And I believe Devin and Andrew met with the county judge today and updated him on all these change orders, so this is not going to be a surprise to our county partners.
Thank you.
Let's see. Item 11 on our agenda is a closed session. David, do you have...
Do the honors, Gage.
Yeah. I move to enter executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810.1B to deliberate future sale or acquisition of real property.
Second, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.